Bill, you got enough?
Yep.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join us for a moment of silence in recognition of September 11th, 2001. Thank you. Gentlemen, are there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
No.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes to last public business meeting?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Dr. Nowaczek, welcome. Item number one, we have Frostburg State University President, Dr. Ron Nowaczek, and he's here to talk about the county's opportunity scholarship.
Thank you so much for the opportunity to join you again. It's been a year, I think, since I've visited with you and enjoying it, and I wanted to share with you some updates on the university and certainly talk with you about the Allegheny County Opportunity Scholarships. As you may remember, two things I continue to talk about is student success and the other is regional development and outreach from Frostburg State University. And with regard to student success, financial support to our students is critical. And I want to share with you how important the Allegheny County Opportunity Scholarships are to us. It's a critical component, which I think you'll hear in a few minutes has reap benefits for the county. Since its inception, we have awarded almost $720,000 in scholarships to almost 450 students from Allegheny County. Twenty-eight percent of those students are the first in their families to go to college. And I think that speaks very, an important message, how much this scholarship means to a lot of families to help improve the lives of students in this area. Now, you may recall that ninety cents of every dollar goes to current students, so it's a pass-through, and ten percent is invested in a permanent endowment. That endowment currently stands at $86,500. To know what that means, this is money that will be there in perpetuity for scholarships. And this year, that allowed us to offer an additional $3,419 in scholarships to students. So we're not only doing the current, helping current students, but also helping future students with the funds you provided us. Allegheny County has the most students of any county in Maryland FSU. We had this past fall, we don't have the new numbers yet for this semester, but for last fall, we had 718 undergraduates, 165 graduates, which means that one out of every six Maryland students at Frostburg State University were from Allegheny County as undergraduates, and one out of every three graduate students is from Allegheny County. This year, we have 79 new students coming in from Allegheny County that enrolled with us this fall. And for this fall, 196 students are receiving opportunity scholarships, so one out of every four Allegheny students currently at Frostburg State University is getting an opportunity scholarship. Now, the impact, I think, is important too, because it's not only you're giving us the money that's processed, but also the outcomes, I think, is critical. 163 of the wardies that you provided money to have graduated, and ninety-one percent of them still live in Allegheny County. One hundred and forty-nine are living in the county. Only five percent have moved more than 45 miles away from Allegheny County. So you're seeing the money reaping benefits, I think, within the county here. And as you know, retention is critical. What we find in terms of student success financially is critical to retaining students. Our overall retention rate for first to second-year students is approximately seventy-seven percent. For the students who are getting the Allegheny County Opportunity Scholarships, that percentage is almost ninety percent, it's eighty-nine percent. So it is making a big difference for us, and I thank you for that. I want to, in a second, I'll introduce a student, one of our students, who is an Allegheny County recipient of one of those scholarships, to tell you about his experience. But before I get to that, I just want to also talk briefly about the things we're doing in academics that you may want to be aware of. We are working very closely right now with Allegheny College of Maryland to look at opportunities to increase our offerings. One thing we're looking at, working collaboratively with Allegheny College, is to begin offering a four-year nursing program on campus that would be done collaboratively with Allegheny College. As you may know, we offer an online version for working adults, but clearly that we know there are students who are graduating from high school who want to pursue a four-year degree in nursing and do the traditional four-year study. So we're going to be, I'm working very closely with President Banbera to create an opportunity for us to offer 40 to 50 positions next year for students who'd be interested in a four-year degree. That would be the first four-year degree at a public institution in western Maryland for nursing. We also had a nursing practitioner program just approved. We'll be working closer with western Maryland Health System. That nursing practitioner model, as you may know, allows for nurses with additional training to offer medical services, in many instances, under the supervision of a physician or independently based on their education. And we're going to be offering two areas. We have approved it for family practice, but also psychiatric mental health, which I think with the opioid issue is going to be important for this region. So you should know that your university is doing as much as it can to work educationally in the area. And in terms of regional development and outreach, we're continuing a number of construction projects which directly benefit citizens in the region. Tomorrow, we'll be dedicating our public safety building on campus. We have a new residence hall that's in the design phase. We have renovations going on on five residence halls that'll be starting shortly. And we're still in the design phase for an education and health sciences building, so you can count on quite a bit of work on campus over the next several years. In terms of economic development, you know, we participated last year in a targeted industry study with the city of Frostburg, which not only impacts Frostburg, but I think also the region and certainly the county in terms of opportunities of identifying industries that may be appropriate for us in terms of economic development. We will continue our work with Appalachian Regional Commission, trying to bring as many dollars from the federal dollars to the region as we can. And we are also looking at developing an office for regional development and outreach at Frostburg State University that would be very specifically defined and designed to help support the economic development efforts both in Allegheny County and Garrett County. And along with that, I think we'll see much more student and faculty involvement. We'll continue to look for opportunities to bring that expertise forward. I know, one thing, very quickly, I know you have a full agenda, but do you have any questions you'd like to ask?
I believe you were recently named one of best values of college?
Yes, we were named, again, for I don't know how many years in a row now, but we're very pleased. Money Magazine has ranked Frostburg State University as one of the best values. And that's important to us because there's two components to that. It's not only student success that they look at, but also the cost of going to college. And so the affordability aspect is really important to us. I do believe that we should be looking at the outcomes of the students rather than necessarily the inputs. I think sometimes institutions put too much emphasis on SATs, things coming in. It's more important to me, I think, that when a student graduates, what's that student able to do? And I think that's what Money Magazine is doing, the recognizing outcomes. Thank you, Commissioner, for that, because, yes, it is looking at two things, the affordability side as well as student success, and we're proud of that.
Great. Dr. Nowaczek, thanks for being involved in the community. It seems like you've been here a long time, but it's just been over a year, and you certainly have a full plate, and we look forward to...
We appreciate it, we enjoy the community.
Continue to work with you. Okay, thanks.
At this point, I'd like to introduce Stephen Glassburner for just a couple of minutes to tell you about his experiences, so you can find out where your money is actually going.
Fantastic.
Thank you, Dr. Nowaczek. I'm Stephen Glassburner. It's my third year here at Frostburg. I'm a third-year senior, because I'll be graduating this year, which I'm excited about. I'm an accounting major. I graduated from Mountain Ridge in 2015, and for the last three years, I've been getting the Allegheny County Opportunity Scholarship. And hopefully next year, since I can get it in graduate school, I'll get it again for my MBA program. And I'm really grateful for the Allegheny County Opportunity Scholarship. It really led me to make the best decision of my life, which was to go to Frostburg State. I applied to WVU in St. John's out in New York. And once I got letters saying, like, all the scholarships I was going to be able to get at Frostburg, I decided to stay, and that was the best decision of my life. I've been blessed with so many opportunities here at Frostburg, just to name a few. I'm the president of the Accounting Association there, which has really boosted my leadership skills. I'm part of the Student Business Leadership Committee, and we represent the, it's five students, we represent the college of business at different events. And actually, something cool about that, there's five students, three of them are from Allegheny County, and all three of them got this Allegheny County Opportunity Scholarship. So it really is keeping the best students here in the area. I'm in the Student Alumni Association, so I'm like a liaison between the alumni and the students. The first two years, I was on the basketball team at Frostburg, but this year, I'm switching to tennis, so I'll be on the tennis team. And then the best opportunity I got at Frostburg was to be the FSU Foundation intern. So for the last year and a half, I've been the Frostburg State Foundation intern. I've gotten to meet many alumni who I'm really grateful for, people that want to help me in my career, and that's been the best opportunity I've ever gotten. And then that led me to my internship this last summer at Orbital ATK. I had a summer paid internship there, and I wouldn't have gotten that without the Frostburg internship, without Frostburg State. So I'm really grateful for that. And they actually extended me into the school year, so I'll be working there the school year, and then hopefully it'll turn into a full-time job, and I can stay local, because that's what I want to do. So, yeah, my future plans, hopefully stay at ATK, get my CPA license, and then open up my own firm in the area. So it really shows that this scholarship keeps the top students here and keeps them here when they work. Like I said, three out of the five in the top college of business group are from Allegheny County, and they all got the scholarship. So to close, I have a couple of numbers of things that I couldn't have gotten anywhere else besides Frostburg State. Three, that's how many years it'll take me to graduate, which I couldn't get anywhere else, and I'm grateful for that. Two, I had two internships through Frostburg. I played on two sports teams. One, guaranteed a full-time position graduating, and couldn't be guaranteed that anywhere else. And zero, zero student debt, and I think that's huge.
Wow.
Staying here, zero student debt, and that's big for the top students. They don't realize spending $20,000 a year at WVU versus zero here, and how much of a difference you can make. So I think that this scholarship really keeps the top students here, and I really hope that future students can reap the benefits of it, just like I have. So thank you.
Great.
Congratulations.
Let's get a photo.
Come on.
Yeah.
Yep. Wow. If that don't make you proud to hear a story like that, I think that embodies what we originally envisioned seven years ago starting this, and boy, that is fantastic news.
Absolutely. Next up, we have Mr. Dale Eymann with the Frostburg Elks.
Well, thanks for having us here this afternoon. I'd like to introduce these gentlemen with me here. To my right is Rob Repant, he's our loyal knight. Brian Westfall is our esquire at our lodge 470 Elks. And Chuck Bond is our loyal knight, I'm sorry, Rob is our leading knight. Before I talk a little bit about Patriotism Week, which is a proclamation we're about to adopt, I would like to take this opportunity to thank the Board of Commissioners for your strong support of Elks Derby Day. As you probably heard by now, Elks Derby Day was awarded the number-one Elks Community Service Project in the country. There are 2,000 Elks lodges throughout the country, and we got the number-one project this year. We're real proud of that, and we couldn't have done it without the strong support of Allegheny County Board of Commissioners and others. And as I said in our article in the newspaper, everybody who ever participated in Elks Derby Day over the 41 years deserves a piece of that award, including our own Dr. Ron Nowaczek, who had a son as a racer this year.
The university's to have a car next year.
Great, I heard that.
Years to develop a one.
Maybe the year after.
Dr. Nowaczek had a little bit of experience. I saw him in the pits on race day, and he had his sleeves all wound up and rolled up, and he was going at it. And it was a real great day, even though the rain tried to wash us out. It was a wonderful Elks Derby Day, and we were real surprised to get that national award. But we're here today to talk about Elks Patriotism Week. And when it comes to patriotism, that's what the Elks are all about. Throughout our history, Elkdom has been purely an American institution, and we believe in everything American. Americanism's the heart of Elkdom. When it comes to our veterans, when it comes to our active military, our youth of our community, our flag, that's what Elks live and breathe for. And so we are really proud that the Allegheny County Board of Commissioners are going to adopt a proclamation on behalf of Elks Patriotism Week. And I assume we'll get a copy of that, and we'll put that proudly in our lodge throughout the year. So with that, I just want to say thank you very much.
All right. Thank you all for coming. We enjoy having you twice a year, so come on up. We've got a proclamation for you. This proclamation reads, "The benevolent protective order of the Elks, through its constitution, is patriotic order. All the members of the Frostburg Elks specifically Lodge Number 470 are to be commended for their dedication to patriotism. The Elks realize that each generation must diligently work to maintain this freedom. Otherwise, through carelessness or indifference, the rights and liberties enjoyed by many may vanish. It's fitting and proper, we recognize this freedom, to honor the nation, the United States of America, which provides it. We, the Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim September 11th through 17th, 2017, as National Patriotism Week in Allegheny County, and urge all citizens with the benevolent or protective order of the Elks in expressing gratitude and privilege of American citizenship. That's signed, Seventh Day of September, 2017. Creed Brody, Bill Valentine, Jake Shade. Congratulations." We have air mark agreement renewal with the detention center. Sheriff, you...
Thank you, Commissioners. I'm here tonight to recommend a one-year renewal of the inmate food services contract with Airmark Incorporated. Airmark has been at the Allegheny County Detention Center for over 15 years now, providing adequate food service to the inmates there. And after discussion, negotiations, and on the approval of the sheriff, I'll be recommending that you approve a one-year renewal at a 1% increase.
Great. Thanks for keeping the costs down. Certain discussion.
Knowing both of those, you know that they can both make a penny squeal, so very good on that.
And the sheriff, we know he's a pinch penny, too.
Well, that's why I mean both of them.
I make a motion, we accept this.
Second? All in favor? Aye. Thank you. Item number four is a Correct Care Solutions, it's a medical service contract for the detention center.
Yes, again, we're going to be recommending that you renew a one-year agreement with Correct Care Solutions. They provide medical care to the inmates at the Allegheny County Detention Center. Correct Care Solutions, or CCS as they're known, has been with us for over 15 years as well at the detention center. They do more than adequate job at the detention center. And after discussion and negotiations, and again, on the approval of the sheriff, we're recommending a renewal at a 1.5% increase, one year.
Yeah, I was reading something, downstate Baltimore County is struggling with these medical costs at their jail, that it's just ballooning, and I think they were looking at like a 10% increase or something like that. Can you speak on how you all work to keep costs down?
Well, there are several ways we work to keep the costs down. Number one, and again, keeping in mind here that we have 24/7 coverage on the medical contract at the detention center, that includes dental, includes psychiatry, we have counselors there as well. And that's how we keep a lot of the costs down, is we handle most of our things in-house. There are very few transports out of the facility. So with that being said, there's fewer hospital bills. Our contractor has to pay fewer hospital bills as well, so we're able to keep the costs down by utilizing in-house services and trying to keep everything in-house as much as possible.
Do you know how many, what percentage are on some sort of prescription medication of our inmates?
I can tell you that approximately 70% of the individuals that come into the facility are detoxed for some type of drug abuse, alcohol abuse. Probably five out of 10 admit to us that they're using, and they're going to go through withdrawal. Within a day, we find out the other two of the five that are remaining, that they're starting to withdraw also. So the detoxification process is probably 70%. Mental health issues, psychotropic drugs such as that, we're looking at probably 30% of the population that are on that type of medication as well.
Yeah, it's not just a jail, it's more of a mental health facility that you all are running out there.
It is now. Things have changed. You know, in the past, and I've been in this business for 29, 30 years, and in the past, what we saw as behavioral issues are now mental health issues. And they need to be treated, because we're putting these folks back into society.
Right.
So we have to try to put out a better product than we get in.
Any further discussion, or do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor? Aye. Thank you, Captain.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Item number five is Allegheny County Visitor's Guide Agreement. Director of Tourism, welcome. Ms. Ashley Workman.
Thank you.
Her grand debut.
Great. Good evening, Commissioners. The Allegheny County Department of Tourism is seeking authorization to proceed with the presented agreement and contract from Nelson Marketing in Cumberland, Maryland, to produce the 2018, 2019, and 2020 Allegheny County Visitor's Guide. This will handle the design, the setup, the sales, and the billing for this guide at a cost of $7,020 annually.
Very good. I've known Steve quite a while, know he'll do a great job for this, and since it's patriotism time, Steve's also greatly involved with the Boy Scouts, which instills that in our youth, so it's a good match.
Absolutely. Is there a motion?
Make a motion.
Second?
All in favor? Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ashley. Moving to our consent agenda, Mr. Everly.
Commissioners, tonight, we have six items on your consent agenda for possible action. Item number six is a motion to adopt Resolution 17-24, which designates Libby Harper as the accountable executive for the county's safety management program and the asset management plan with our transit system, all of this in compliance with the Federal Transit Act. Commissioners, item number seven is a motion to reappoint Cassie Doty to the county's animal control board. Item eight is a motion to authorize the county's Department of Public Works to purchase two pickup trucks off the state bid in the amount of $48,290. Item nine is a motion to authorize the county sheriff's office to accept a drug-free communities grant in the amount of $2,580 in partnership with Frostburg State University for compliance checks for alcohol and enforcement protocols for marijuana during the month of September. This is a 100% grant to the county commissioners. Item number 10 is a motion to renew the county's life insurance coverage for enrollees with MetLife through August 31st, 2018. And item 11 is a motion to declare surplus, a 1998 Ford Expedition currently assigned to the county's Department of Public Works.
Any discussion? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor? Aye. All right. Mr. Everly, anything further?
Commissioners, nothing further this evening, thank you.
Mr. Rudd?
I have nothing.
Commissioner Valentine?
Just a couple of things real quick. Couple of weeks ago, when we were down at Mako, Commissioners had a chance to meet with a lot of the different secretaries, and it has proven to be successful. We talked to them about, to State Highway, about some, what we thought was some needed changes along Route 51, the industrial boulevard, some rather dangerous intersections. I got a call today from State Highway, asking me questions about a recommendation I made to use electronic signs in case the Cumberland overhead bridge is shut down to an accident, which seems to happen at least once a week anymore, use some signs east of Cumberland to redirect traffic to go over and travel on Bedford Street and Henderson Boulevard, and then onto Route 40, keeping the traffic out of downtown Cumberland. And doing the same thing west of Cumberland, routing the traffic up there with electronic sign down through Lavalto, try to keep some of that traffic out of downtown Cumberland. Plus, State Highway had engineers out looking at the Messick Road, Evets Creek Drive intersection today. I believe they're getting ready to start on the changes they're going to make to Mexico Farms Road. So that was quite successful. Plus, I talked to the governor and lieutenant governor about trying to get some sort of insurance relief for our first responders or ambulance services. Cost them a lot of money, especially with the opioid problems, using a lot of medications, a lot of man hours are not recoverable. And we have gotten some calls and some contacts on that, so we're going to keep working on that.
Great. Mr. Brody?
I'll keep mine very short, just two little things. First of all, I want to thank Danny Williams to pass along a thanks to the town of Mount Savage for their Labor Day Parade. That is fantastic. That is one place you can go anytime, and you know the whole community is going to turn out and make a very good day. Thanks, Danny, because you always keep us informed of what's going on, or please send our thanks back that way. And to follow up just a little bit more on what you spoke of, Commissioner, when we left Mako down there that Friday, SHA, with just a few issues, started responding back Monday, and has been in contact every week since. So what I'd like to follow that with is Mark Whitmire, the governor's representative for the western half of the state, is with us tonight. Mark, if you would, please pass that along to the governor, because we have never, ever had that kind of service. I mean, that's fantastic. And the local folks has always been over backwards to help us, but their hands has always been tied. And what the governor's done is loosened them up to actually let the local people address local problems. And, you know, it was last year's delegate Michael reminded us that you guys don't really call on us a lot for help like we used to, because we don't have to now. I can remember just a short time ago, when it took three delegates, a senator, and three commissioners sitting with the administrator of State Highway to get an entrance permit right here in this building. So things has really changed a lot and changed for a positive way. So, Mark, if you would pass our thanks along for that, that's appreciated.
Commissioners, I wasn't even going to mention it, but since you did bring up the delegation, there is something that we need to talk about, it needs to become public. It's the pillars in front of the Washington Street Library. It's a disgrace. The State of Maryland Historic Trust is holding up the project, and for the people watching, listening at home, you know, you would think, what's the cost to paint a couple pillars? Couple hundred dollars, couple thousand dollars, maybe 80,000, couple hundred thousand dollars? It's ridiculous. The State Maryland Historic Trust does not answer to anyone. They operate on their own. They get into these agreements with historic buildings and force it down. Everyone has to listen to them. So it's going to be resolved. We're going to get the delegation involved, because I'm not going to sit here and spend hundreds of thousands of dollars to repaint some pillars and make sure we have appropriate paint on there that they deem, by their arbitrary standards, is satisfactory. So that's something we're going to be working on, and I'm looking forward to it.
I've got some old paint out at the house.
Yeah, we can do it for a couple hundred bucks this weekend. Speaking of paint, that wasn't on purpose. We have a paint recycling program coming up this weekend. Also, they'll take any pesticides, herbicides, caulking, stains, all that's free. Paint, it's our first paint recycling... Paint, it's our first paint recycling event in the county, $2 a gallon, out at the fairgrounds from 10 to 3, so bring it out there and...
That's where we'll get the paint for the pillars.
Absolutely, we can do it like that.
Along with some used motor oil, if you have that.
Yeah, that's one of the ones, all the information's on the website if you wanna check it out.
Really?
Yep, absolutely. That's a good deal. The county is, the full cost is $5, the county is subsidizing that $3 a gallon, so help out some people, and we'll help out the environment a little bit. All right. Signed up to speak tonight, first we have Mr. Kenneth Wilmot.
Good evening, I'm Kenneth Wilmot, I live at 513 Ford Avenue, Cumberland, Maryland. Own 11 pieces of property up there. On August the 15th, I went to the Animal Control Board meeting, advisory board, first one that had been held in a year. They gave the report for six months, where they get, the lady who runs this, Mrs. Wilson, where she gets the authority to just do as she please, I don't know, but that's the way it is. There was three people showed up for the board, and she called it a forum. Now, three out of seven is not a forum, there's cause for seven people to be on that board. Next, I asked a lot of questions, I got no answers. So, last, two weeks ago, I came here and asked those questions, and I would like to have some answers. Where do these people get the authority just to do as they please? They're supposed to be having animal control. I got a friend that lives on Blackstone Avenue, and a neighbor behind him's got 16 cats. Would you like to live next to somebody that's got 16 cats? The same as the lady out in Mexico Farms. The neighbor had 31 cats. There's no control. I don't know what the people out there are doing, but we have spent a horrible amount of money with no results. I don't understand why you people are backing this no-kill policy when it is a horrible waste of money, and you haven't even gave a thought to the consequences. All the birds in my backyard have disappeared. I've got one little bird that still chirps. People I talk to, they can't understand why it's our responsibility to put every cat and dog on public welfare, and that's what they're doing. Now, I figured it up last, I gave you some facts the other, last time I was here. That place creates ton and wise waste, ton and wise, not just pounds. And everything that's in it leaches out into our water systems. People wonder why they're getting sick, this and that, no wonder. Now then, just to feed these animals, I don't know. I don't own a pet. When I was a young kid, I had one, but we fed it from the table. But anyway, I don't know what it costs, they got over 300 animals out there. You know, that's, it takes a lot of money. I don't know, I don't know, but like a lot of people do, and they say it costs a lot of money just for one animal. Now, I don't think anybody gave any thought to the horrible expense and the consequences of a no-kill policy anywhere. If you get on your computer, look up all this on cats and dogs or whatever, just in the United States alone, there's between 50 and 60 million feral cats. That's not counting regular cats, and it doesn't even count the dogs in this state, in the United States. Now, all the filth in this, the waste from these animals leaches into our waterways. If you get on your computer, they got sea otters out in California dying from cat diseases. Out in Hawaii, they got seals dying from cat diseases. Everywhere, these diseases are leaching into our water system, and it's affecting everybody else. And then, these people, they telling everybody, well, you can have as many animals as you want. That's not true. The code in effect today, for the states, if you got four more animals, you've got to have a kennel license. And on top of that, you're supposed to keep the males and the females separate, and that's not being done. As I, I've looked all over town and talked to people, that these foster homes that they set up, they're not being kept separate. And that's another sore spot with me. When I asked where these foster homes were, I was told, in no uncertain words, it's none of my business. Oh, it might endanger the lives of the people who are fostering these cats, but it's just a dumping site. There's no real foster home, you can't foster 16 or 31 cats. Who in the world can take care of 31 cats like hell out, if they're in Mexico Farms? Another thing, Mexico Farms, that's the favorite dumping place for people to get rid of their cats. Mason Road's another favorite place. Black Valley Road's another place. But, I'm here to plead, get rid of this no-kill policy, put somebody in their head, they've got some backbone, nobody likes to kill animals, but there's a total overbalance of nature. I mean, they're just killing all our wildlife. I got a neighbor, a couple of years ago, her cat came home dragging a snake, so everything that moves is, you know, open season. But, anyway, I've, you know, let's do something. We can't live with all these cats and unwanted dogs in this, in the world, that just doesn't happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilmot. Next signed up, we have Mr. Ed Taylor, Cumberland. Welcome.
Gentlemen, for the record, my name's Edward Taylor, I'm president of the Cumberland Historic Cemetery Organization, who I am representing here. Our office address is 400 South Allegheny Street, Cumberland, Maryland, 21502. I have a few important comments and a suggestion, but before I do, I want to thank you, Mr. Shade, on your comments about the Maryland Historic Trust. I have been president of the Cumberland Historic Cemetery Organization for 34 years, and I've had a lot of dealings with the Maryland Historic Trust, and every single one of them have been extraordinarily unpleasant. We network with a lot of historic organizations from one end of the state of Maryland to the other, and many of the presidents of these groups would testify to the same. So I can understand what they're going, probably putting you folks through with the library. But that's not why I'm here tonight. Over the years since 1983, we have erected over 900 monuments. These monuments have been placed on graves of the great patriots of the American Revolution, clear through the 240-year great history of our nation to the current day when some of our deceased members die, and all of the great Americans in the middle of that time span, including the Civil War. We are the proud organization that built Maryland's first monument to any black Union Civil War soldiers. That monument was erected in 1991 at the Sumner Cemetery, and it's the first of its kind. There's been others erected throughout the state since then, and that's every year where we hold our Memorial Day service. We've erected multiple Union and multiple Confederate monuments. We have one monument, however, it is not on a grave, and that is right, it's on public property directly in front of our headquarters at South Allegheny Street, Nebrad Avenue, and it is placed on the 1801 brownstone columns, which were the entranceway to the historic Rose Hill Estate, which is now gone. The columns are the oldest standing structures in the city of Cumberland. In 2008, we installed a red granite plaque which covers over two centuries of American history to the great local patriot, American Revolutionary War soldier, Captain David Lynn, and we also were fortunate later on to put his gravestone up in Rose Hill. As we have seen over the past month or so in this country, a terrible desecration of American monuments. It has started with monuments to the Confederacy. These are being removed by municipalities. Most Americans in every poll are adamantly against this. This is a small minority of people in this country. I know in this area, we have never had an increase in membership to our private organization like we have this year, and it's all come in the past month and a half, due to local people joining our group, because we appear to be the only historic organization in Allegheny County speaking out against that. Now, one fortunate thing, we have not seen any of these sort of problems in our area, because we don't have any Confederate monuments on public property. What I am concerned about, we're a charter member of the Coalition to Protect Maryland Barrel Sites. Back in the 90s, that institution was able to get a lot of excellent cemetery protection laws passed in the state of Maryland, and now today, Maryland has the best cemetery protection laws of all 50 states. I testified for many of those bills. There's even calls to remove Confederate monuments from graves. Now, the ones that we have erected carry our name and our seal, we own those graves, and removal by anyone of those monuments would be called theft of funery objects. That goes for Confederate flags, or any type of historic flag, or flyers, or whatever have you on a grave. We've seen over the years since 2004, Dr. Jeffrey Davis, who isn't even a citizen of this county, call multiple times for the removal of the Ten Commandment Monument, which was erected in 1954 in front of the Allegheny County Circuit Courthouse on Washington Street. Our organization, multiple times, came forth publicly to defend that monument, including the last round last year. Dr. Davis continues to push for this issue, he continues to attack our organization because we defend that, we also defend and promote Union and Confederate history, and we are going to continue to do that. Matter of fact, we're working on a Confederate monument now, which will be unveiled on All Souls Day, November 2nd of this year. And that, by the way, is to Mr. Sprig Lynn, who was the grandson of Captain David Lynn, who's buried here in Cumberland. One thing I want to note historically, only 3% of Confederate soldiers during the Civil War owned slaves. The historic Pollock Cemetery in Mexico Farms that we restored in 2001, that's a very well-known Allegheny County Confederate Cemetery. Those folks never owned a slave. Matter of fact, I haven't found one Confederate family in Cumberland, Maryland, or Allegheny County, Maryland, that ever owned a slave. There are some in nearby Mineral County, including my family, the Taylor family, and my sixth-generation great-grandfather set those slaves free in 1848, more than a decade before the Civil War. However, I will note, not one slave left. They stayed it with the Taylors until 1902. They were free to go whenever they wanted. Apparently, they weren't being treated too bad, but I'm not here to advocate slavery, because I know that'll be in the media in two days, or even sooner. We are not here to promote racism, or white supremacy, or Black Lives Matter, which are all hideous organizations to this country. We are here as historians to preserve our history. Back to the Ten Commandments, what concerns me is not now. I am convinced under the three commissioners we have now, that monument will never go anywhere. But I've seen many commissioners come and go, many tourism directors come and go, mayor and councils, and the cemetery group's still here. We have trusts set up that remind death, the organization will continue on, and my concern is when we get, and the day will arrive where the three of you will not be here, and who will be sitting in these three chairs? My worry is, they will be three commissioners that will want that monument removed. Perhaps they even will want to remove the George Washington Monument. Just today, the National Cathedral in Washington, they're removing stained glass windows in honor of Confederate heroes. This is absurd. In today's Cumberland paper, at a post office in New Hampshire, there's beautiful artwork of the early settlers and the American Indians. They want those removed. And by the way, we're working on a monument to an American Indian, and that will be placed in Lonaconee next year, or I'm sorry, in, near Crescent Town this year or next year, and it is in name of Lonacona, who, the town of Lonaconee is named after. That was one of the main Indians of the Shawnee tribe that lived in our area. But, what I'm suggesting, I don't care who you would give it to, but I'm suggesting that the county survey three square feet out around the Ten Commandment Monument, and donate it to a private institution. Mentioned Commissioner Valentine one time, we would be interested in doing that. I kinda, we don't want another responsibility, but if no other group, it should have gone to the Elks Group in Cumberland, but I believe they're disbanded now, because that's who the monument was donated to through the Cecil B. DeMille effort, when the Ten Commandment Monument was out playing in the theaters in the 1950s. But it should be preserved in some legal way, perhaps, Mr. Rudd, you could work with the commissioners on that, because it is safe now, but as we see, these monuments being removed all over the country, they were erected, some of them, over 100 years ago. People donated hundreds of thousands of dollars for those monuments. The ones in Baltimore, the four Confederate monuments were put on Maryland Historic easements, and by the way, the Maryland Historic Trust, all they needed was one member to give the mayor and council Baltimore permission, and they got it. So, you can't rely on the Maryland Historic Trust. They're out, they have their own agenda, and it isn't to preserve Maryland history, I can assure you that. We need to act locally on this, and like I said, it isn't just the Ten Commandments, it's the George Washington Monument. We're working with our, my attorney, Mr. Paul Sullivan, to see what I can do about our Captain David Lynn plaque. I'm concerned what's going to happen decades in the future. Our monuments are part of our Western American Judeo-Christian culture. It is our duty as American citizens and Allegheny County citizens to preserve these historic sites for future generations. Remember, 100 years ago in 1917, when the communist Bolsheviks looted and destroyed Russia, one of the first things they did is change the history of the country that did not agree with the communist agenda, and tear down all the monuments. Let's not let that happen here in Allegheny County. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. With that, our next public business meeting is Thursday, September 21st at 5:00 p.m. We do have a work session that day at 3:00 p.m. See you then.